All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the School District of the City of Dearborn. Today is a regular meeting, Monday, November 10th, 2025. It is 7:00. I call this meeting to order.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Jamal Ajami.
Here.
Ali Basie.
Here.
Pat Di Ambrosio.
Here.
Mary Petrikoff.
Here.
Nazar Asar.
Here.
Amar Zar. President Mosip.
Here. Thank you. Next item, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Hannah Rita, Assistant Principal of Maples Elementary School, will introduce the students that will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
Good evening, everyone.
Please stand, everybody, if you're able to.
I'd like to introduce you guys to Adam Dia, Adam and Dia Shami, Samah and Yassin Shami, and Abdur Rahman and Yunus Yafi'i. They will be leading us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Awesome. I have all of you step over here so you can get your certificate. Abdur Rahman Yafi'i. Thank you, Abdur Rahman. Yunus Yafi'i. There we go.
Good job.
Yahya Shami. Samah Shami. Yassin Shami. And Adam Shami. Thank you so much.
Give him a hand. Great job.
And Ms. Harris just told me that they're a set of twins, so three sets of twins.
Explains the last name.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Next item, please.
Superintendent Updates.
Unfortunately, Dr. Maleko was not able to attend today due to health reasons, but we do have Mr. Tom Wall, Executive Director, in his place. So, Mr. Wall, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, members of the board. The first noted, our agenda item is retirements. We have four retirements. Maria Ali, 39, half on third years' worth of service. Julian Codulo, one and a quarter years' service. Ryan Courtwright, 39 and a third years of service. And Mary Kowalski, 35 years of service.
Let's get some more army applause.
On the non-agenda items, the first one is that recognizing a couple of our outstanding administrators. MASP Principal of the Year is Mark Rommel at OL Smith Middle School. And second, we have also the Assistant Principal at OL Smith Middle School, Mahafayed.
Can I just let everyone know that this is the very, we set precedent in history. This is very first time that this association has awarded a principal and an assistant principal from the very same school from one district. So, we can be proud of that as well.
Congratulations to the principal and assistant principal for their award. And, yeah, we hit, the fact that we did also have Ms. Abdalbaki of Stowe as a finalist is a testament to Dearborn and how Dearborn leads the state. So, thanks to them, to all of them for their hard work.
All right. Next, we have the Dearborn Public Schools has also awarded the Catalyst Award. This award is for Mission College Access Network. MCAN is thrilled to recognize Dearborn Public Schools as an Impact Award winner for our upcoming conference in Lansing, which I believe just happened. And Dearborn is being recognized as Catalyst Award winner honoring their work to advance the college-going culture and/or system-level change within the school, district, and community.
Yes, and-
I can have Mike DeSailly and President Mosip come up for a quick picture, and any other board members that want to go?
Yeah, sure. Actually, we did take some good pictures at the conference, so I was fortunate to represent the district along with Executive Director Mike DeSailly at the conference, where Dearborn Schools received the Catalyst Award. And this award is, goes to all of the counselors, all of the teachers, all of the assistant principals and principals who worked so hard to make sure that our students have a pathway to college, that they do fill out their FAFSA. So, thanks to each one of them, this award is definitely for them. Thank you.
Any other board members want to come up here?
If, yeah, if any other board members would like to join, please.
Okay, I guess we're taking pictures.
By the way, I done did a great job fixing my rolls on that seat.
That is not true.
All right. I can't be the only one not getting it.
The only, the only woman left.
I could photobomb from behind.
All right. Another exciting event is anytime we hire new teachers, we like to honor them in coming to the board and the public to introduce themselves. So, Mrs. Turf and Mr. Farage, if you come up, introduce the new teachers. And I believe the new teacher is kind of form a line in the middle, so come up and I'll let them kind of explain what has to happen.
Good evening, everyone. Can I ask the newly hired professional staff to step up here to be recognized?
Don't be shy. Just come on, get in line.
Okay, we have around 12 of our newly hired professional staff this year who are with us tonight. We invited all of them, and those who were make, able to make it, thank you for being here. We hired close to 90 teachers this year. Not only classroom teachers, these are professional staff, meaning special ed staff, counselors, coaches, and classroom teachers. 56 of them are classroom teachers, and 30% of them come into us with experience, and we truly appreciate them considering Dearborn as their next place in their, in their career. So, I'm going to ask them to stop up here and say their name and which school they come from, or which school they're serving now.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Adu. John Adu, I'm currently teaching at Fortson High. Fortson High, I'm a special ed teacher. Before then, before my employment here, I had been teaching in a couple of schools, both here in Dearborn and also in Detroit. But this is my first year in Fortson.
Welcome. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joyland Fattado. I'm a new graduate from Western Michigan University, and I've been working at Garden City Public Schools before being hired here at Dearborn Public Schools.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sabah Basie. I'm the new third-grade teacher at Miller Elementary. I was a Dearborn Schools student, so I'm happy to be here. It's my first year in the district. I'm happy to be serving. Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome aboard.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Copas. I am a new speech-language therapist here at the district. Not new to the profession. I've done this for travel therapy for the last few years, but I'm happy to be here and make my new home here in Dearborn. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Hi, good evening. My name is Hoda Karazi. I'm a kindergarten teacher at McDonald Elementary, and I'm happy to join the team.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amna Maroo. I'm a new social worker at William Ford Elementary.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Amal Harara, and I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Salina Intermediate.
Welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name is Leila Al Azab, and I'm a special education teacher at River Oak Elementary.
Good evening. My name is Mohammed Jidd. I am a math teacher at Fortson. It's my first year in Dearborn. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Just have to give a shout-out to Fay Turfi for the incredible job she does serving the new teachers from professional development to visiting them in the buildings and supporting them in any capacity that they need. So, thank you, Fay, for your dedication and for your hard work. Thank you.
Next item is a quick bond date, bond update, and Mr. Muston will give us a brief update of where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Good evening, trustees, Ms. Harris. So, earlier this year, we did a pretty comprehensive facility review and report that was provided to the board that was done by Quinn Evans and Gilvane. And that report drew upon the work of fielding that was done a while back. But this report provided a little bit more detail on the infrastructure needs, replacement versus renovation, and the historical impact on the renovation of our buildings. So, this spring, we began work with Byram and Fisk to facilitate additional community feedback. They completed 20 one-on-one interviews, actually 19 one-on-one interviews with key influential leaders in our community. They also did four different focus groups. They just wrapped that part of their work up, and now they are working on developing a community-wide survey that will be sent out here very shortly, within the next several weeks. All of this work that they are doing will help us in our efforts to identify areas and messages that our community needs more information about or clarifying any incorrect information that may be out there. So, all of this will help us in getting a better sense of where our community is on their knowledge base and what they feel the needs are in the district as well. So, our plan is to have all of that information, both the facilities report and the community input information, all shared with the board. And then that hopefully will lead to an upcoming board study session here very soon, hopefully before the end of this calendar year. And then this will help the board in formulating a possible plan that we can then share back with the community, get some further input about a specific plan, make some corrections and tweaks based upon that input we get from the community. And then hopefully by the spring of 2026, this board will be able to approve some ballot language for a bond opportunity that will appear on the November 2026 ballot. And hopefully that will get us to where we need with a plan to meet the infrastructure needs of our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Reston. Last item on the, on my comments for Dr. Maleko is tomorrow is Veterans Day. We want to make sure we honor all those that served our country to provide the freedoms that we have in America. And if you are available, Lori School does have an event tomorrow morning that I'm sure everyone would like to be there, but those that can, please show up and honor our veterans. That concludes my comment.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wall? Seeing none, we can go to the next item.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Go ahead with the first item.
I believe we're going to do Etzel Ford.
Yeah. Etzel Ford Boys Varsity Soccer Team.
Mr. Wall.
Good evening, everybody. We're very excited to celebrate our Etzel Ford Varsity Soccer Team on their district championship. I believe this is the third year in a row. Is that right? Four. Okay, well, four-peat? I don't know if that's a word or not. But allow me to welcome A.D., Mike Rulex, and the coaching staff up to the podium just to elaborate a little bit more. And I know Principal Hassan is in the audience, rooting them along as well.
Good evening. Thank you guys for having us here tonight. We have started quite the tradition at Etzel Ford High School. I was kind of blessed walking into it. They've had some success, but once we hired Coach Alarashi here, and Coach Joe's been along, and Socker's a recent graduate last year who came back to coach with us, they've just kind of continued that tradition. They've won four straight league championships in the Downriver League and four straight district championships. This year, they're 18, 2, and 2. And along the way, we had a couple of kids etch their way into the MHSA record books, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. And I think we are the standard in the Dearborn area for boy soccer with all the success we've had. They train hard all year, great students in the classroom, great leaders in our school, and it shows on the field as well. We're going to have Coach Nasser. He's going to announce all the kids, and as he gets through the kids, he'll talk a little bit about the accolades, some awards they've won throughout the season individually. So, Coach Nasser.
What we're going to do, I'm going to give us team order.
Okay.
So, as Coach Socker says the player's name, feel free to approach the board, shake hands, and then just step to the side. And then when everybody's name is called, we'll take it.
Okay. Sounds good. Go ahead, Coach Nasser.
Goalkeeper Hadifa Al Jahmi.
Is he here?
Goalkeeper Adam Al Saidi. Goalkeeper Adam Rashid, all league. All league, all district, all region, all, all-state honorable mention. Abdullah Ali. Abdurrahman Darisham, all district. Mahsin Umar. Abdul Al Saadi, all district. Ali Zar, all district. Abdur Rahman Al Sawaf, all league, all district, all region, honorable mention, all region, all state honorable mention.
Congratulations.
I do want to talk about Abdul for a second. He is tied in the MHSA record books for most assists in a game at 10. Incredible, even had 10 assists in a game, but great job, young man. And it's an Etzel Ford School record as well. All district, Gaita Ali. Scored the first goal during the district championship versus Allen Park. We go to Ghamdan Al Mureesi, all district, all league.
Congratulations.
A freshman. Mugadaz Zarifi. Hadath Nasr, all league, all district, all region, all state. Scored three goals during district championship game.
Congratulations.
So, Harith was on an incredible pace this year. He has scored 70 goals this year, which is fourth-best ever in MHSA history. He's tied for, no, he's in second place for most goals scored in a game. He has 11 goals in one game this year. Incredible young man, you know, kind of led us along the way, but his teammates did a great job in setting him up and giving him those opportunities as well, and he did the most with it. So, one of the greatest goal scorers ever in the state of Michigan. Good job, or this year, Harith. All league, all district, Brody Malley. Leyth Abdul Ghader. Tarek Haydar. Nasr Ali. All district, Gift Symbol. Haytham Yahya. Al Asad Al Qadhhi. Hakeem Ali. All right. Lastly, all district, Mitchell Williams.
Congratulations.
Aisa Muhammad.
He took yours. What's his, what's his name? Yeah, I have it here. Yeah, give it to him. Guess which. Mitchell. Yep, congratulations. Good job. All right. If any board members would like to join the group photo, please do.
Is there anybody who didn't get a certificate that we might?
Yeah. Ali. Ali. There's one, right? Who didn't get their certificate? Oh, you got yours?
Then what, what's your name?
Get on your chair. There is no way we're-
No, I don't know. Yeah, I don't, let them get situated first.
Too many. I said I'm standing on the chair.
Come on, number nine, push your way in there. Step in the ladder.
Going to crop your head in the bag.
Good job, Coach.
Congratulations, Coach.
This is where being a female in this group wasn't going to work.
Congratulations once again to Etzel Ford Varsity Team, and the soccer team is incredible at Etzel. If you have not attended any of their games, I ask you to do so next season. They, they put in the work day in and day out, and they show amazing goals. And as you've heard, we're breaking records with these kids. So, quotas to all of the coaches and to the players and their families as well for their engagements. All right. Next item.
Chastity Townsend, the Dearborn Education Foundation.
Okay, and we have another commendation, another great person to recognize.
She doesn't like all this attention. I would like to take a moment to offer our deep thanks and congratulations to Ms. Chastity Townsend, the Executive Director of the Education Foundation. As Chastity will be leaving the foundation to pursue another career opportunity. The success of our schools and students is fundamentally tied to the success of our community. Under Chastity's leadership, the foundation has worked tirelessly to strengthen that tie. The results have brought greater financial resources to our classrooms, additional scholarship opportunities for students, and significant contributions that enable the expansion of key programs and classroom support. On behalf of the Board of Education and the entire Dearborn Public Schools staff and students, I want to acknowledge Chastity's tireless efforts, dedication, and professionalism. She's always gone above and beyond her work in her support of our students. We are very grateful for the time she has spent as Executive Director and wish her continued success in her professional pursuits. And we have something for you?
So, thank you, everyone. It's been 11 years here in this district, you know, raising a lot of money, providing scholarships to the students, and I've made a lot of good friends throughout this. And I will definitely see you throughout the community. I am still within Dearborn, so I'm sure I'll see you at plenty of events, and I'll still be supporting our students and our staff in just in other ways. I am still working here until they do find my replacement. So, I am working 70 hours a week right now between both jobs and making sure that I give both, you know, my 110%, like I always have. I wanted to let you know that we just received another $50,000 today for Salina Green Schoolyards, and we have raised in four months and given back to this district over $500,000 in four months. So, I'm going out with a bang, for sure. But, you know, Mardi Gras is set for February 10th. Green tie is already set and on the books. Both places are booked. So, my successor will have a smooth transition and be able to step in and take over. So, thank you all for everything you've done to support me and our work here at the foundation. So, I thank you all.
Thank you for what you have contributed to the success of the Education Foundation and for our students, Chast. We really will miss you, and we truly appreciate your support. And moving forward, we'll still, we'll still see you around. Thank you. Thank you. I do also want to acknowledge, or Mr. Wall can acknowledge, the board members who are from the foundation who are here.
Yes, if you're a board member of the foundation, please stand up.
And be recognized and thanked. Thank you.
Mr. President, I need to go back to commendations.
Sure.
Good evening, once again. This one's going to need glasses. I'm doing the Dan Campbell here. All right, and you guys got me working tonight. I mean, I'm taking pictures, I'm reading stuff. This is, I'm going to get back to the old glasses. All right, sorry. All right, district commendations. Commendations to the 44 staff members who led professional development sessions for secondary teachers on November 4th. Sessions focused on core instructional areas and essential skills. Staff presenters were from our middle schools, high schools, and central office. The district is fortunate to have such engaged teacher leadership driving these essential professional learning opportunities. Commendations to STEM Middle School and the other schools that did well in the recent ranking of elementary and middle schools by U.S. News and World Report. STEM Middle School was the top-ranked middle school for Michigan. One more time. STEM Middle School was the top-ranked middle school for Michigan. For elementary schools, Howard ranked number 72, placing in the top 5%. Hague ranked 154, and Duval 164. Hague ranked 154 and Deval 164, putting them in the top 15% of the 1,475 ranked elementary schools. Bryant Middle School ranked 106 in the state and Lori ranked 138, putting them both in the top 20% of the 832 ranked middle schools. Commendations to all those involved in the 12th Annual Cipriano Run on November 4th at Fordfield Park in Dearborn. A total of 539 students registered and more than 500 participated in the largest turnout since qualifying times were established. This outstanding effort was made possible thanks to the combined efforts of staff, students, and many volunteers. Students in 4th through 8th grade were invited to participate in the run based on qualifying times in their school gym classes. High school commendations to Dearborn High Film Students who earned a nomination for a National Academy of Television Arts and Science Awards. The film Death in the Family was nominated for Best Fiction Long Form. Winners will be announced on November 21st. Producers Jacob Head and Noah Almashkar graduated in June, but the movie will be released on YouTube later this month. Commendations to our four district students who competed in the MHSAA Regional Cross-Country Competition and earned spots to compete in the state championship. Fortson High Junior Maya Al Ashkar is the first Fortson female to qualify in 27 years. Fortson sophomore Murad Al Jami took third in regionals in his second year of qualifying. Other qualifiers included Dearborn High Rami Bazi and Etzel Ford Senior Abdul Al Jami. Commendations to Fortson Link Crew Students who volunteered to help with the November 4th Professional Development Day. Students came in early on their day off from school to help set up, assist teachers in finding their sessions, and to clean up at the end of the event. Student volunteers included Batima Al Aragi, Leif Al Janadi, Naya Al Mumun, Nor Al Saidi, Sarah Al Shami, Ali Baro, Hussein Harb, Jenna Karali, Nora Nasr Ali, Yana Nasr, and Hassan Serh. And elementary commendations to elementary district instructional coaches Lisa Jorgensen and Amy Wolf for facilitating six days of intensive professional development. The PD focused on the science of reading and the components of effective literacy instruction. Through their skillful facilitation, Ms. Jorgensen and Ms. Wolf have built the capacity of elementary classroom teachers and had a positive impact on Tier 1 and 2 classroom instruction. Those are district commendations for this month. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Employee recognition.
Hello, good evening. I'd like to invite our two honorees that were able to join us tonight to come up to the front, please. All right, we will go ahead and get started here with Ms. Habat Abdalbaki. So, we recognized her this month as our Administrator of the Month. She's the principal of Stout Middle School, has been with the district for 23 years, I believe, yes? And she was nominated by her colleagues for her outstanding leadership, her unwavering dedication, and her inspiring vision, which is creating such a positive and inclusive culture at Stout. She was described as being the heart of the school, and she has also been a finalist this year for the MASSP Principal of the Year Award as well. Habat, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Thank you again. I'm really honored to have this recognition. One thing I can say about our district is they find ways to make staff feel heard, seen, and appreciated. I really admire that of our district, so thank you and thank the staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a couple other honorees that I want to recognize that weren't able to join us tonight. But we recognize Rania Bazi Hajazi. She is a teacher at Dearborn High School. Rania is in her fifth year with us, and she was nominated by her colleagues for her commitment to supporting every student and for being such a valued team leader amongst her peers. We also recognize Cindy Costello. She is the engineer at River Oaks Elementary School, and Cindy has been with us for over 21 years. She was also nominated by her peers for her hard work, her leadership, and being so supportive of her fellow team members as well. So, thank you to them all. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Now, acknowledgement of donations. Dearborn Education Foundation Scholarship Donation, Michael Jafar.
So, Michael Jafar here is an attorney in the area, and we were connected through some people within the district, and he wanted to provide a scholarship to our students, and that will be based on financial need, and it is already up and on our website. And this is a five-year scholarship giving $2,000 in awards. So, like.
You're a lawyer, really? Do you want to say something?
You know, you know what, that's a good one. I like that. I remember that. I grew up taking the bus to school and fed through a lunch card. If I wanted to have a scholarship when I could afford it now, the kids would have lunch cards. It's not based on, you know, grades, it's based on financial need. If it wasn't for the lunch card system in the Dearborn Public Schools, I mean, my parents would have sent me food, sent me with food to the school, but it was just amazing. Me and all my siblings used lunch cards. I think it's an amazing thing, and, you know, a scholarship like this didn't exist when I was going to school, but I want to make it a reality.
Thank you, Mr. Jafar, for your support. If anybody else would like to join.
Thank you. Don't spend the phone, please.
Thank you. So much.
Acknowledgement of donations, Mason.
Good evening. A donation of $3,000 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with the Gene Haas Foundation to be used for Team 5531 Orange Crush Robotics. A donation of $480 has been offered to Smith Middle School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a refrigerator. A donation of $400 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a cooking class. A donation of $100 has been offered to Salina Elementary and Salina Intermediate Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a healthy living program. A donation of $100 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for young fives. A donation of $100 has been offered to Carter and William Ford Elementary Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a healthy living program. Donation of $250 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a reading corner. A donation of $275 has been offered to Carter and Henry Ford Elementary Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for pre-K swim. Very nice. Pre-K swim. A donation of $250 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for rain gear. A donation of $530 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for an esports initiative. A donation of 500 pumpkins has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Eastbourne Fruit Market to be given to the students and staff during the Fall Festival celebration. I'm thinking that might have already passed. A donation of $100 has been offered to Hague Elementary School by Schwitzer Engineering Laboratories, Inc. to be used to offset the cost of ongoing curricular opportunities that promote hands-on learning experiences in math and science such as field trips. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ali Bazi, and thank you to the Dearborn Ed Foundation as well as other companies that are giving back to our schools and students. Next item, please.
Approval of the amendments. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Finance Committee Meeting, October 13th, 2025. Board Report 25-56. Regular P-12 Meeting, October 13th, 2025. Board Report 25-52. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move for approval of these minutes.
Motion moved.
Motion moved by trustee Pathil Koff, supported by trustee Al Jehmi. Any corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, may I attach a unanimous roll to the motion? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Union Leadership Commentary. This section of the Board of Education meeting is being added to further enhance the already strong commitment and longtime partnership between the district and administration and all the bargaining units. Both instructional and non-instructional union members serve on a wide variety of standing and ad hoc committees that drive the work and decisions-making in the Dearborn Public Schools. In addition, administration meets monthly with the leadership team of all unions as well as a group meeting with union presidents. These meetings are not required but are an extension of the collaborative partnership that has long existed in the Dearborn Public Schools. This section will further enhance the commitment to valuing all suggestion, views, and opinions brought forth by all staff members in the district. Association of the Dearborn School Administration, ADSA, none. Dearborn Federation of School Employees, DFE, none. Dearborn Federation of Teachers, DFT. Ms. Kathy Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was hoping to address Dr. Maleko for a second, but I'm sure he's at home watching, so I'm gonna go ahead and address him as if he's here.
Yeah, talk to the camera.
Dr. Maleko, I wrote this down because I didn't want to miss anything because sometimes I meander. Dr. Maleko, as you prepare to move on to Lansing, I want to take a moment on behalf of our educators and union members to wish you well and thank you for your service to Dearborn schools. Leading a school system is never easy. We can only imagine how hard it was to call those snow days. We want to thank you. Thank you for Lansing. We want to thank you for your years of service, and during your time here, we've shared both challenges and successes. Through it all, we've appreciated the opportunities to work together in support of our students and staff. We wish you the very best in this next chapter. I'm looking at Tom a little bit. That's the seat. But now I want to address the board. So, this is kind of, we're entering a really crazy time now. And as we look ahead to welcome interim superintendent, which will be named tonight, and moving forward and choosing our new superintendent, our members are hopeful. We look forward to continuing a relationship built on communication, collaboration, and mutual respect. We hope to see a leader who values voices of educators, understands the realities of the classroom, and makes decisions that keep students and staff at the heart of their work. Our schools are strongest when we put all this, when we all pull in the same direction for our students, for our community, and for the future that we're building together. Thank you.
Thank you, President Martin. All right, we don't have anybody for DSO for the engineers. So, if there are no objections, I'd like to move citizen participation up before we have special reports. Thank you. Seeing none, we can go to citizen participation, please.
Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 p.m. By submitting a blue card to the board, secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate any immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. Agenda items for action. We only have two tonight. And first person is Sean. Parent and occurred at Etzel Ford High School, an incident that occurred at Etzel Ford High School.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is September Shaw, and I'm here as a parent advocating for my daughter. She's a 16-year-old student athlete at Etzel Ford High School. I'm speaking tonight because my daughter was sexually harassed by a teammate last month, and the school's response has left critical gaps in her safety and dignity. This was not an isolated event. There was a clear pattern of sexually inappropriate behavior. On October 21st, my daughter alerted her coach, a trusted adult, that her teammate had been leering at her during team stretches and had been standing in the shower stream across from her without washing, staring at my daughter's body. Instead of taking decisive action, the coach told my daughter to ask the student to stop. My daughter did exactly what she was told, and a week later, this behavior escalated. On October 29th, my daughter was in a private bathroom stall in the girls' locker room. While she was changing out of her swimsuit and completely naked, the other student deliberately positioned herself to watch my daughter through a gap in the stall partition. A third teammate intervened, but the offender continued staring and said, "I've never watched anyone urinate before." My daughter yelled at her to stop and confronted her again after dressing and leaving the stall. My daughter immediately alerted both coaches of this incident on October 29th. They alerted administrators, who launched an investigation. The district's Title IX team later determined that my daughter's rights were violated and stated that supportive measures were implemented, but those measures are neither sufficient nor compliant with Title IX standards. Federal law requires schools to ensure equal access to education and to avoid placing the burden of safety on the harmed student, yet my daughter still bears that burden. To this day, my daughter has no clear and forcible plan for safe bathroom access, a basic human need. Let me ask you. If you were told to report to work after a sexual harassment incident without knowing how you could safely use a bathroom, would you show up? I doubt you would, yet this is what my daughter faces every day at school. Communication to the swim team has also been troubling. A vague message was finally sent to swim families on November 6th, the night before their final meet of the season. That same message should have gone out immediately, allowing families to make informed decisions about whether their child was comfortable to continue in the sport. The delay speaks to a pattern of minimizing the harm rather than addressing it transparently. And throughout this process, the offender's disability has been repeatedly emphasized as if that should excuse or minimize the harm that my daughter experienced. Supporting all students is important, but it cannot come at the expense of another student's safety and dignity. When framing, when the framing prioritized the aggressor's perceived vulnerability over the victim's trauma, it sends a dangerous message. Tonight, I'm asking for action. First, implement immediate and forcible safety measures during the school day, especially for bathroom access. Second, ensure that future cases prioritize victim's safety and dignity above all else and that Title IX obligations are fully met. Oh, I'm sorry, my daughter deserves to feel safe at school and in her sport, and I'm asking for accountability and a commitment to do better, not just for her, but for every student who trusts this district to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw, for speaking to us. We will get in touch with you since this is a very, very important matter. Thank you.
Next person, Michael McKee. And he would like to speak on HC vacancy. And he would like to speak on HC vacancy at Dearborn High School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? I understand that this may be the last board meeting before a hiring decision is made regarding the head coach, football head coach vacancy at Dearborn High School. So I wanted a chance to speak before the board and to the public regarding maybe the opportunity we have as a district to hire the right person and how critical it may be. Quick background, I live at 23711 Hudson Street, right in Dearborn Hills, across the street from Dearborn High. My kids will go to Dearborn Public Schools. I'm a proud alum of Dearborn High School, class 2010. I was part of the football program, and those four years there really shaped who I am today. They opened the doors for me in ways I could never imagine, including the opportunity to work on the coaching staff at the University of Michigan football team, working with the defensive line under Brady Hope. Now, I come to you to discuss how, not only as a single member, but maybe as a representative of a larger constituency of individuals like myself who really care about this role and who that person is. Dave Mifsid was my football coach. Reflecting maybe 20 years ago.
If you can refrain from mentioning names.
Sure. He's no longer district.
Yeah, we understand.
Got it. This individual really had a positive impact on my life and the person I am today. Maybe you could say it was because he was a great football coach, a good man, a good leader, a good mentor, but that might not necessarily be the reason why. Reflecting back on it, in my opinion, it's because he was in that role as head coach for Dearborn High School. And that role really makes an important, plays an important role on a lot of impressionable young teenagers like myself. Now, looking ahead at the decision that needs to be made, it seems that in past, we may have lost our identity as a school in terms of the football program. I want to restore its glory. And the decision that the board may have and the influence it has, maybe adjacent to the superintendent, interim, or new, or the athletic director for the district, or the principal of Dearborn High School, I'd like to kind of discuss who I believe could really fit the role to bring back the identity of what it means to be a Dearborn pioneer, and that is Mike Ajami. Mike Ajami was a senior when I was a freshman. He's been a mentor and a leader of mine to me, for me, basically my whole life. I really looked up to him and still look up to him today. He has, alongside of a lot of the previous coaching staff, been a large member of the Dearborn High School football program over the past 15 to 20 years. He has an uncanny ability to be not only a great role model of how to be a good husband, a good father, but a positive contribution to society. And I wanted to make sure I just.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. We, we here at the board table do not partake in the hiring practice of coaches. Usually, the building principal and the HR are the ones who do that. So, but I, I would ask you to send those comments to, addressed to the principal of the school, as well as to the executive HR director who is in present, who's going to give you her card as well, to send that statement. But we thank you so much for coming today and speaking, addressing us. Thank you. Trustee Al-Jehmi?
Just to add, I think it's the principal and the athletic director.
Yes.
Because we want to make sure that we don't, we allow them to hire as they please.
Yes.
Allow them to do their job.
Yeah, we don't interfere.
Yes.
Yeah, especially in that the principal should have the leeway with the athletic director to make the right choice, and if anybody has any recommendations, they need to work with them. And to me, HR comes in once they make the recommendation, and Mason could tell me otherwise, but we want to, we want to make sure they have the leeway and no pressures put on them to do.
Absolutely.
What other wants.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next item is board follow-up. So any follow-up from previous citizen participation items? I don't have any. Seeing none, we can go to the next item.
Do you want to flag special reports?
Yes, please.
Special reports by Mr. Robert Addy and David Musterton.
Good evening, board trustees. Mr. Wall, Ms. Harris, thank you very much. Joining me is Mr. Addy and Ms. Hetrick. Also, we will hear from Principal Rumel as well, who will be joining us as part of this Parent Square report. I do want to acknowledge Meila Harp and Chris Kenenberg, who has also been part of our team in getting this Parent Square tool implemented across the district. Especially want to thank Meila for all of her work with getting all of the databases between Parent Square and RISA and US and getting all of that, all those systems talking to each other effectively. She has done an outstanding job, and I just want a little shout-out to her for that, as well as everybody who's joining us here up at the podium. So we want to talk about what brought us here to implement Parent Square in the district. You know, for a long time, we have been using school blogs as a communications tool. Matter of fact, it was Dr. Maleko, and he started as superintendent almost over 10 years ago, who made it a mandate that schools would use their blogs and use that as a communications tool for, for parents and for the community. And at one time, that worked out very well. It was an effective tool, but over the years, we've, we know now that people communicate a little bit differently, and there are better tools and other tools available. We also had a RoboCall system that was a little bit antiquated, that needed some updating. And also, we understand that, you know, everybody operates on their phones, they operate using apps, and Parent Square is an excellent tool for us to cross all of these platforms, to utilize all the different tools into one platform to help with our communications needs. But it goes way beyond just us communicating as a district. This is a tool that our schools will be able to use to communicate, our teachers will be able to use to communicate, and it's not just one-way communication. It's two-way communication. It's also simplifying things such as forms, making payment options a lot easier for parents, and a variety of other tools that we will slowly roll out as this tool becomes more and more prevalent throughout our district. We're going to touch on a lot of different things here this evening, and each one of the folks joining us up here are going to be able to share a little bit about Parent Square and a little bit about the different aspects of Parent Square and what makes it so effective. So at this point, I'm going to turn this over, I believe, to Katie.
All right. Parent Square has a lot of cool tools. I'm really excited to have this in the district. We'll start with ease of use. You can do it from your phone. Power goes out in your school, you don't have to worry about calling someone at central office and hoping they can send a message. You can do it right from your phone. Or if you're a busy principal, putting all your time out in the building, you can send it right from your phone. You can receive it on your phone as a parent, as a staff member. We have staff members that don't sit at computers. They can still get district information right where they're at. All communication from all schools in one place. We bolded that. We're not quite there yet, but we're going to work there. So you don't have to worry about, well, did I get that from her mind? Or did I get that on WhatsApp? Or where in the world did I get that? I remember reading something, where is it? Well, it will all be in Parent Square. You can find it all in one spot. We have the option for texting and app messages instead of phone calls. We're already doing that with our attendance notices. You know, those auto calls, automatic calls you get when your child's absent, those used to be just phone calls. Like, I would come home and get it on my voicemail, and sometimes the first part was cut off. I was like, that's lovely, which child is absent, from which building? Now you get it right on your phone, so you can see it at work or however you want. Automatic translations, this is also so huge for us. All of the stuff from Parent Square goes to parents in whatever language they prefer. If it goes to your email, it's in whatever language we have on file for you in MyStar. If it goes to your phone, it's whatever language your phone is in. The trans, the communications back are also translated. So if a teacher sends a note to a parent, like how your child is doing today, and the parent wants to respond, they read it in whatever language they want, they respond in whatever language they use, and the teacher reads it back in English. So that is huge to help communications on this everyday conversation between parents and our staff. Sign-ups and permission slips. A lot of our teachers started using signup. You can use this instead of signup genius to schedule. It's designed actually to schedule parent-teacher conferences. It's a lot easier because you just tell it what times, and it'll populate all the slots for you, creates a message you can automatically send to parents. Field trips, you can officially sign a field trip permission slip. It makes you log back in to confirm you are the parent, but then you can sign your child's permission slip. You don't have to send a paper back, you don't have to get it back to school. Notification reports, we can see who is getting communication. This was big for us, too, because before, we didn't know if we had bad emails for people. We didn't know if we had phone numbers that didn't work. Automatic things went out, and we never saw. Now we see that this email isn't working, and we know we need to reach out to this family and make sure we have some valid way to reach them when we need to.
One of the great things with Parent Square is we have different ways to communicate with parents and community members. One of those ways is through posts, just like how we had the blogs a long time ago. Unfortunately, some of the plugins weren't working, so what we are able to do is to actually make an RSS feed, so when staff are able to post, it goes onto our blogs and it posts about different events that are happening in our schools and around the district as well, too. What's great about Parent Square is, in addition to those post messages that go out, we can also send direct messages. And this is sort of like a text message to parents, and it helps them to understand a little bit about what's going on in their child's classroom specifically. If an event happened during the course of the day, a direct message can be given to let parents know what's going on. Or if someone forgot to bring their homework, just a quick message like that. Direct messages, basically blind copy the parents in there, so you can send out a couple of different messages like that to let parents know what's going on. And then we also have alerts. So if there is an important event that's happening in the school that you really need to communicate, like the bus is going to be late, an urgent alert can be sent out to let families know so that they can expect their children might be coming a little bit late. I'll turn this back over to Katie.
I've come up several times tonight. Newsletters, Parent Square is great for creating newsletters. It has templates already in there. A lot of our schools have already started to figure this out on their own and creating their own newsletters, which not only look nicer, it's a little easier to communicate and digest. As a district, we currently do two newsletters. One of them is E3 that just goes to employees. Then there's the First Bell that automatically goes to parents and staff, but community members can also sign up. So anybody who wants to stay informed on what's going on in the district, if you go to the First Bell website, you can sign up to get the First Bell newsletter, and that goes out about every other week. They both go out about every other week. Advantages of the app. Okay, the app is cool, everyone should get the app. But before I go into that, you don't have to have the app to use Parent Square. The fact that we're using it means you automatically get translated messages. If you don't sign up for the app, you'll still get an email every time there's a post, you'll still get a text when there's an alert. So even if you don't have the app, and we know all parents will never get all, will never get them all on the app, that's okay. You will still get the, the heart of what is Parent Square. The advantage of the app is you have a lot more control. The default is that everyone will get a digest at the end of the day. If your school sends three messages, you don't get three messages pinging you, you get a digest that lists all of them. That's a lot easier, a lot of parents kind of prefer that than, okay, yeah, school's great, but, but I need to work, too. So if you have the app, you can pick when you want notifications. If you're one of those parents, and we know a lot of them, who never, ever read email, you can say, "Don't email me." You can take that off as an option. I will say, you cannot opt out of urgent alerts. You can turn off most of your notifications, and we have some parents who have, but that's their choice. If we send an urgent notification, you will get it. And that's probably like if you're, there's a power outage at school, or we'll see about snow days, if the urgent notifications are regular notifications. But, so you can also change your preferred language. If you have the app, you can go in there and say, "Yes, I speak this language, but I'd rather get it in that language." You can see additional information from your school in there, like we have all the school menus posted, you can get the school calendar, there's other things you can get in there. It's also a great way to find your teachers and communicate with the teachers or the staff at your building. And again, with the, the two-way translation with the parents, you can do that through the app on your phone. Or you can also sign up on your computer if you're not a phone user.
When we first started this, there was a little bit of confusion between Parent Connect and Parent Square. And so we wanted to kind of clarify this for families so that they know the, the difference between the two. So Parent Connection is basically where parents can go login, they can see their students' grades, see attendance, make payments, and really understand where their students are at by looking at test scores. With Parent Square, this is the official district communication tool that we're able to use to communicate about school events. What's interesting between the two is they have both Parent Connection and Parent Square run off of our MyStar Q system. So if you see the Q logo in any communications, this is where it comes from. This is where we pull that contact information to send out the events so that parents can be communicated with, as well as where parents can get information on grades and attendance through the MyStar Q. And I'm going to turn it over to Principal Rumel to talk a little bit about Parent Square adoption.
Thank you very much. My experience so far with Parent Square has been very positive. I'm very cautious when it comes to adopting pretty much anything new, but especially technology. And so far, we're very pleasantly surprised of, one, how well it talks to the systems that we had in place already when it came to like our school website and like the in-touch notification system and such, and two, like how we haven't even scratched the surface of it as to what it can do yet. So really, from, from my point of view, it's a lot of our, our community and parent communication pieces that we put out that are usually on our website, on social media platforms, and sometimes through different apps that teachers use in their classroom. But in addition to that, there's a lot of, I would say, like experiential back-and-forth communication that can be used in addition to this. And example would be when we put out a weekly communication, and parents can follow up right away with, you know, "I have a question about this, that, or the other," in a direct message chat-type scenario. So it kind of blends the, the best parts of like a social media platform along with the pieces that we have in place already. And it's nice that it's, it's a one-stop shop, not only for me, because I can put things out easily in all places, and when I'm trying to teach somebody new how to use these things, how to do it, but at the same time, as a parent or community member, it's nice to know, "I just go to this for all things communication, and I'm in a good spot." The versatility of being able to have that app is obviously, obviously very nice, but when it comes to not having any interest in all apps, depending on if it's a grandparent that's part of the community, or someone that's not very apt to the, the new technology, it's nice that telephone calls, emails, texts can still go to them depending on what they're interested in. And, and again, I'm going to say that a lot of our teachers and staff members have, have been using this to, to send things like permission slips and announcements and things like that, but really, we haven't even come close to scratching the surface as to what it can do. But, but so far, very, very pleased as to where we're going with it and, and how well it talks to what we already have in place.
So taking a look at our data that we have so far, when you look at the information that we've been able to collect, we're going to show a couple of slides on where we're at with everything. 99.6% of our communications are going out to parents. So when you look at it, we only have about 55 parents that we're not able to contact. And so what we're doing is working with buildings to update their contact list. As long as parents are able to update it in MyStar, we'll be able to strive for 100% communication. As you can see here with the languages, we have it in English and Arabic and everything like that, so we are able to have that translation feature as well as other languages for our families that speak Spanish and Chinese Mandarin. And when you look at the status of delivery, while we have a lot of families that get it via email, text is up there as well, too, with almost, a little, almost 6,000 right there. And about one-third of our families are using the app right now, 31%. So we're looking to kind of improve that as we go on, and figuring that we're in our early phases like this with adoption, we can see strides moving forward with this. And finally, when we look at a lot of the different features that are out there, getting auto notices, direct messages, we have a lot of staff that are using the direct messages. While we do have a lot of posts that are out there as well, too, over 9,000 of them, we have over 11,000 photos that are being shared of different school events. So when we look at all this information right here, it's a great way, early on, since August, really using this tool to communicate about the great things that are happening in our district. Sharing the messages via posts with photos as well as direct messages about what's happening in the classroom. And so with that, here are some future possibilities.
Mr. Romo touched on something I forgot to mention. Parent Square also connects with any social media the school or the district has. So you can go and post to all of it at once. So like if you want to share something great happening in the school or some urgent alert, you can just click and it will send it to everything at the same time, which is another great communication tool, including the website. I'm also going to circle back quickly to the, the non-contactable. Most of those people are actually in adult ed, but Parent Square wants them to have adults in their parents. But I don't really know if you're in adult ed if you need a parent contact, which is why they don't have contacts yet. Future possibilities coming soon. We are working, we know attendance is an issue we want to address in the district, chronic absenteeism. We are hoping to start regular updates, maybe once a month, letting parents know how many times their child has been absent this year. You get the daily message, they were absent yesterday. But if you read any research on this, one of the things you find is a lot of parents don't realize how much their child has been absent. They think, oh, it's five, six, seven days and really it's like 20. So we're hoping that will kind of keep parents and students, we're hoping to send it to older students, too. We still have logistics to work out, which is why it hasn't started yet. We have additional training coming up for teachers and administrators. We're paying, we're hoping to start, set it up so you can pay for field trips online as well as digitally signed permission slips. We do have a couple of schools that have started the permission slips, but not too many yet. Eventually, we could send report cards to all parents digitally. Some principals have told us, well, we, we like paper. We're comfortable with paper. But as we get more comfortable with this, and you could do both. The advantage of this is both parents would get it. Whether both parents are in the same house or not, both parents would get it. You wouldn't have one report card that's disappearing into the abyss of the backpack or may or may not get to mom and dad through the mail depending on who sees the mail first. So I think that is all we have. Get the app, one last selling point. And then, do you all have any questions for us?
Trustee Pleschka.
I got a lot of questions. All right. Juan, I'm taking it that you're not automatically signed up for any of this, even if you have a student.
You're not automatically signed up for the app. You automatically still get the information, but you're not automatically signed up.
So how are you getting the information if you don't have the app?
You'll still get it by email, just like you did before. You'll still get text messages for the things that we send text messages. You can still send voicemails and some of our schools do that. This is all kind of a rethinking for us and for the people using it. Before, we just had limited options in how we could do things. And like a lot of schools had already figured out, parents weren't reading their emails. So they started sending a lot of texts because that was the only way to reach all their parents. And now we're trying to kind of retrain them that your parents can get the app and then they can decide when they get messages versus you telling them you have to listen to a voicemail right now.
Okay. Who, who at the, as Mr. Romo mentioned, you know, he, if you're sending out an alert or if you're doing, who's monitoring when you have a lot of parents maybe flooding back? Once, once you get up to speed, so to speak. Right now, you only have a third of the parents using this. But once you have everybody signed on, who's going to be monitoring all this information that could be being communicated back and forth? I mean, you know, do you have the secretary in the office getting inundated with people saying, oh, my God, there's, what do we need to do? Or something like that. I mean, who manages it in each building?
Manage it.
That's a good question. I mean, it depends. I mean, I, I think you'd be speaking to like a, a major situation, right? Like an alert.
Well, any, any, anything, whatever, because I, if you're saying you, you see great things for using this tool. I don't know what you're anticipating, but if at any given point that there's more than five parents trying to reach you or reach somebody in the building, who's, who's monitoring all of this?
Well, I think we'd go back to whoever was posting whatever it was. So in my case, it's when I put a post up or I put a direct message up, they would be replying directly to me. So it'd be almost like emailing the fact that depending on how many you get in a day, it depends on how fast you can get to it.
If you only have so many right now, but you would like to have the entire building doing this and you get, are you prepared to being able to manage something like that?
Well, and again, like every staff member has access to do this. It, it only, it's, it's, it's like whatever classrooms the students have are turned on in addition to the entire building. So it's all in the same place at the same time. So if Mrs. A sends something out, then they're all going to respond to Mrs. A on whoever that is. Mr. B puts his thing out and it's the same way. Whereas I'm, from the entire building perspective, they would respond directly to me. So far, I, I would say I have one or two people that regularly respond back and forth with me on it. I anticipate that to grow. But I think in the case of a, of a emergency alert, it would be similar to that situation where probably people would be calling the office and all kinds of things for that. But at this point in time, when it comes to just basic day-to-day communication, I think it goes back to whoever the poster is. And maybe as it grows, we'll have to start thinking about that. But at this point in time, it's very similar to how email is responded to.
To piggyback a little bit on, I'm, I'm sorry, back?
I think, yeah. Right.
It, it also depends on the type of message that's going out as well, too. Because with the different types of communication styles, a post is just a message that we send. It goes off to the, the readers like that.
And nobody responds back?
Nobody responds back like that with the, depending on the type. But for the most part, they're not able to like that. With the alert messages, those are just blasts, like you get the Amber Alerts and everything like that. It's informing you of something that's happening. Direct messages are the ones where you get to have the back and forth conversation with the individuals like that, as well as group conversations in the direct messages.
Also levels of permission as well. So as, on the district level, we have the ability to send messages district-wide or to individual schools or three schools, five schools, people, whatever. Print, yeah, certain grades, what have you. Principals have access to every but thing in their school. Teachers have their classrooms. So that helps manage what types of messages are going out. In fact, this is something that we're actually, we're getting some requests from some staff members who would like greater access. Because maybe they, so for example, maybe they have a club that is going to impact a lot more kids than they just have in their class. And we have to be careful about that because we don't want too many messages. There's going, you know, you can over, over saturate people as well. You have three, four kids and you're three, four schools, you're already getting a lot. So, so managing the access is something that we will have to do as, as, you know, as this expands.
Interesting.
Question about that, about monitoring messages and such. You know, if there are parents that are reaching out, is, is this at a school level or wider or smaller? If, if parents are messaging, right? Who's overseeing to make sure all those messages did get replied to?
Usually if you're messaging, you're messaging a specific person. It's very much like email. So you're picking who you want to include in the message. The only case that that wouldn't happen is if you're applying to a post. But like at the district level, the posts, I don't think permit comments. I know they do at the building level and that is something you can turn off. But that's not much different than when the schools had blogs. They put things out and they weren't really meant for you to reply to the blog. If you had concerns, you would reach out to the school. And in the app, there is a directory of people in the school. So it's easy to look up a teacher or a principal or a secretary or somebody else and reach out directly to them with your communication.
And I'm assuming this is as secure as all of our other communication tools so that somebody can't hack in and put out an alert that, you know, we have a snow day when we don't?
That's the great part because everything integrates with our student information system. It's in one place versus how we were doing things before where we have in-touch that's over here. Some, some buildings we're using Remind, some we're using WhatsApp. This is all in one place. It feeds directly with our student information system, so it's secure. And because we have certain protocols in place with being able to log in, it provides that extra layer like that.
Great. I have been using the app since it was launched and I'd say I'm a great fan. I turned the language to Arabic just to see how the experience will go and it was okay. It kind of brings the, the message. Sometimes it's a little bit off because it does use Google Auto Translate for, for those messages. But can, can the school district send custom Arabic messages, if they'd like to, to those users who are using this certain language?
If we want, we can customize the Arabic and Spanish messages. So when I go to do a post, it'll automatically translate it for me. Then I could see that Arabic or I could see that Spanish. We're also learning on our end, if we tweak the English a little bit, it can help with the other languages. Like early release in Arabic, release tends to come out as the word that gets you out of prison. So, but if we change it to early dis, if we change it to early dismissal, then that translates better. And some of that is us learning too. And that's not bad on our end because that might actually be a better work.
Correct.
So, but yeah, we know there were hiccups. There's always hiccups with auto translate. And if you have sensitive messages and you have especially a parent liaison or someone in your school, it can come proof it for you, there are ways to do that.
And how can we increase more enrollment? I know we're still at the launch, but how can we get, I know we're not going to get to 100% subscription, but at least to a, a great number where we can have parents on the app?
Sure. So, so actually with just kind of rolling it out, we planned a slow rollout this year and we're at that 30% mark, which the folks at Parent Square were very impressed that we were that high, given that we weren't doing any push. Now, our first push is this week during Parent Teacher Conference. We provided this, these QR codes and a flyer that Katie created that kind of explains the difference between Parent Square and Parent Connect and provides the QR codes. So those are available, going to be available during Parent Teacher Conferences all this week at the schools. So hopefully that will be a first push. So we're going to see at the end of this week if we get a little bump up in people, you know, take downloading the app and adding the app. Then what we'll do is we'll wait till after the holidays and then probably sometime early next year, we'll do another campaign to try to do another little push. Our goal is hopefully that by June, we will see, we'll get more around that 60% mark. And then we'll keep pushing up from there and see where eventually where, where we get. You're right, we probably will never get 100%, but if we can get, you know, eventually up into the 80s, that would be, that would be phenomenal.
Great.
Yep. Trustee Aljamain? Sorry. I don't recognize you. Go ahead. And then Trustee Bazey.
A couple of questions. I mean, I love the technology. I love the tools. There, there is some confusions when I first looked at it because there's so many different tools. There's Parent Connect, you know, Parent Square, Schoolology. There are so many different ones and, and, and parents could be overwhelmed. And I, I tried to figure them out is what their roles are in MyStar. And so is there a way to not confuse the parents or make it easier for the parents? Because initially I thought Parent Square was replacing Parent Connect, which is not the case. There, there are two distinct application. One is more for notification, one is for grades. Is School, Schoolology still being used?
That's being rolled out, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Schoolology is gone. We switched to Google Classroom.
Just, just do me a favor, discontinue the texting, kind of still getting text in from my, or emails from my son who graduated two years ago. So if we're not using it, the company, you know, just disable that. Just, just an additional, but I mean, there's different.
Are you getting your Friday Schoolology updates still?
Well, it's saying missing assignment. There's no missing assignment. I know there's no missing assignment because he's in, at the university.
Hey, maybe he's keeping something from you.
Yeah, maybe that is.
He still has an assignment that hasn't been turned in.
We'll have to check. But, but I understand MyStar is the, the source, where everything comes from. So does MyStar not have those capabilities that Parent Connect and Parent Square have?
No, it's really just a data system. So these both connect to it in different ways. Parent Connection is as close as the parents would see of MyStar because that's where the grades and all the teachers and all that kind of stuff is.
Okay. Just maybe clarification for, it would have been nice for me because I, there's a little confusion on my part until I figured it out. And maybe for the parents, because I think most of them are more concerned about looking up their kid's grade, which is what Parent Connect is. And Parent Square is more of a communication mechanism to allow them to be informed. And if there's any other tools, you know, I'm not sure. You said the other one is gone. So just the word Parent Connect and Square make them seem like they're the same thing.
And we didn't name them, so we don't have any control of that. As much as I love Parent Square, if a parent's only going to get one app, I would suggest Parent Connect. Because that's really the heart of what you need to know as a parent. What are their grades? What are they missing in homework? What is the attendance? That's the stuff you really need to know. We communicate it better through Parent Square, but we can reach you even without Parent Square.
But I mean, Parent Connect, does that automatically mean in grades?
The information's there, but you have to manually log into Parent Connect to check it.
But Parent Connect doesn't tell you, like for example, just this week, I was trying to see what time the chess club meets at MyStar.
That's not on there.
That, but it is on Parent Square. I went to Parent Square and saw it's Monday after school. So that is kind of to note information from the school as Parent Square and then Parent Connect to just grades.
Right. And if we found one that would do them both, we would love that. But right now, we need two for two slightly different things.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Bazey and then Trustee Subha.
Is there going to be, I don't want to say a push, but like, so like right now, communicating with the teacher, they can be email or text them or use Parent Square, but that's for this teacher and that teacher wants to do it this way and trying to, trying to keep steady of all that. Is there going to be a push to say, hey, you know, parent-to-teacher communication is going to be Parent Square? Or is it up to the staff or they're comfortable?
Right now, it's up to the staff and the principals. We didn't push this hard with teachers because we were switching from Schoolology to Google Classroom. We kind of felt like that was a big change and to dump two giant changes on them at once wasn't fair. So we focused a little bit more on the administrators. A lot of the teachers are adopting it on their own because it is pretty cool. So, but that's, that's part of why we haven't pushed it harder is we know we're, and we knew adoption wouldn't be instant. We have 1,400 teachers in the district, so that's a lot of people to get all on something at the same time. So we knew it'd take a little bit. One of the things we can do to try to increase enrollment when we're sure we're ready is you can invite parents within Parent Square. Anyone who doesn't have an account, you can send an email to them saying, hey, here's a great way. And it sends them right to the login link to set it up. A couple of schools have asked to do that on their own. We haven't done it as a district yet. Kind of like if the principals think their staff is ready and their school is ready, that's great. We will support you in doing that. But we don't want to necessarily push it to all the schools because the principals know best. At least for now, what's going on in there is we kind of grow the adoption.
I'd like to add too that, you know, we invited Mr. Romo here because he's one of several schools that have really jumped on board with this. And I know that we have one of our elementary schools where the principal just said, this is it. This is what we're going to do. And he's moving his staff all over to Parent Square because they work on different apps. So again, as Katie mentioned, we didn't want to, you know, with two big things, we didn't want to push it. But the organic growth that's coming is, is even better than what we expected.
Trustee Subha. Oh, did you have a follow-up question? Trustee Bazey? Okay, Trustee Subha, go ahead.
First of all, as a young millennial, this excites me. I, I think Parent Connect was around when I was a student too and I know it's, it's great. But this as a communication tool is, is, is changing, game-changing. So I commend you for the work. But I, I have a couple of questions. One is, how are we defining or teaching or training on what an urgent message is versus what a post and an alert should be? Or, you know, however it's split up? How do we know that teachers aren't just spamming everything as alert, alert, alert?
So we've provided a little bit of training for administrators. So in the slides that our, our team has actually gone over, we've differentiated between the difference between in a, a direct message and an urgent alert so that staff are able to know each of those. And then we also have reached out sometimes and we've seen some urgent alerts that are more of a, this can be a post and everything like that. So that it's a learning opportunity for growth for everyone.
Awesome, awesome. And then my second question, sorry. I know you mentioned the potential use for, for clubs. As it stands or as you see it in the future, like extracurricular activities for clubs, for coaches even in sports, do we plan on utilizing and planting this? And then especially for our older students, which you also mentioned, you know, are we going to be able to shift to students who will only get certain notifications, let's say for extracurriculars if they choose to do so?
Our hope is certainly to include clubs and everybody else. That's part of, again, we want to get rid of the Remind and the WhatsApp and 12 different applications. So we, that's something that we're hoping will grow a little bit organically and then we'll start telling people that this is what you're doing now. and then we'll start telling people that this is what you're doing now. Um, there's also, and we haven't got there yet, uh, students can also log in. They can download something called Student Square, which is just like Parent Square, but it says students, so they will do it instead of parent. Uh, but they can also access information.
Okay.
We just want to be cautious because a lot of our teachers are still using emails to communicate to students, so we don't want them to get on Student Square and miss emails that went out because they were only checking one source instead of both.
Right, right.
But we expect that to happen at some point as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Trusty Basie, go ahead.
Um, you know, I, I have kids in three schools, so managing all of this has been, it's been good. You know, I, I like to be able to communicate, I like I can go back. But one thing that I've found is, um, the feed is linear, right? So if a teacher sends, here's sign up for parent teacher conference, and then the next message that comes in is, you know, hot dogs tomorrow instead of hamburger and, and all of that, is there a way in the tool, uh, from a priority perspective, to say, hey, this is a high priority message and this needs to be pinned to the top or this needs to stay relevant, uh, even though new messages-
I just helped teachers figure out last week how to pin their parent teacher conference to, to the top of their classroom feed.
Okay.
So, as you said, it's still linear and I've learned on my own to, if you hit the little bell, then it shows you all of them as a brief summary from all the schools, which is kind of handy so you're not scrolling between schools. But, but yeah, you're right, sometimes the, the other messages might sink a little bit.
But a, but a teacher can pin something-
But a teacher can pin something to the top of it. I think to see that, you would have to go then into that school.
Okay.
Well, then one last thing though, because if the state and districts are talking about access to phones during the day in the building. So when we start having this conversation about wanting students to be able to, we're going to have to be thoughtful, uh, about how we incorporate this into their day if we're also going to tell them, but you can't have your phone to, during the day. So, um, that, I don't want to be sending mixed messages-
Right.
About we, we've become so reliant on utilizing our phones for everything. This is just one more thing where we're kind of pushing the phone a- as, uh, a, a end-all, be-all of all communications, and I want to make sure that we're careful that we don't overdo it.
Agreed completely, and that's part of why we haven't really looked much at Student Square. We're more focused on getting all the adults on, but we, we are aware of that. They can log, you can even as an adult, log into Parent Square, Student Square from a computer too. So if they're doing something on their, and again, it sends emails, so unless the kids change it, if they're doing something on a Chromebook, it would still pop up in their email if it went through Student Square. And the digest times.
You can also set the digest times to go at a certain time as well.
Well, thank you so much for this presentation. I hope parents will also look up, uh, Parent Square on our website and enroll. Uh, this, uh, was an intention to, to make sure that they enroll as well. So to make this, uh, public for everybody so they would be aware of this great new tool, which keeps all of the school community, uh, together and informed.
I, I want to thank the board too for supporting us and supporting this initiative when we brought it to you last year, say we wanted to make this switch. Appreciate that, your confidence in us in bringing this tool to our district, so thank you for that support.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Action items. Special consideration of an action item. Secretary comments. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which the board member or the superintendent wishes to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below. Motion to be approved, action items. At this time, the secretary will call for a single motion to approve all action items on this agenda. With the exception of any items which have just been excluded from this motion by board members' requests. Recommended action, move that action items numbered one through 20 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of 18 and 19.
So 18, we have pulled it so we can have more review on it. And 19, it will need a separate roll call. So any other items that trustees would like to pull out of the single motion? Great, so can I have a move for one through 20 with the exception of 18 and 19?
So move.
Support.
Moved by trustee De Ambrosio, supported by trustee Petlicoff. Any discussion questions? I do have some questions. Okay, trustee Aljamie.
Um, and, and forgive me for repeating the same thing that I asked last time. And, and this has to do with the, the special education budget.
Which item is this?
Item two, three, four, and five.
Okay.
And, um, this is not questioning the amount, but we, I know we do the 27,000 is a blank PO. I'm looking at Tom to, to correct me, but we, every board meeting, we a- ask for additional fund. Right now, we're asking for 100, sorry, 500 something. Is that going to be continuously the norm to each board meeting? We ask for funds for, uh, special education? Not, not that I'm opposed to it, but I'm used to an actual budget to say this is what we expect to spend. And so maybe help me with this. I just don't want to every board meeting bring it up because it seemed like it's a, it's a ongoing.
Every year, um, obviously we're going to have vacancies in positions for special ed. These are unique positions that require certifications that we normally can't find on a given notice. Sometimes they take a while to vet and get through the process. So we usually enter a blanket PO just to start the process as we reach out to these firms to look for a long-term vacancy. So in our budget, we set aside money annually for this broad area of vacancies for special ed.
So, and I know Mike is here, so we have an actual budget of money and we're just using, and sorry for, um, it's clarification from me. So we're, we're using this as a way to, to request more from an existing budget item.
Right, but we're required by law to in, to have the board approve individual contracts with companies. So it's not a budget issue that we're asking the board to prove, but the actual contract with the, it-
As it comes into need.
Right, so we might have to, and unfortunately, there's not one company to go to get all these different types. Each company has their own pool that might specialize, so the board has to approve that contract. It's more of a contract issue than a budget issue.
Okay, so, so I get it, and I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so I mean, the, the, the thing is too, is sometimes we don't know how long our contract of people are going to be with us because we're always trying to hire permanent full-time people who are Dearborn Public Schools staff members. Uh, sometimes if we're struggling with hiring a person or we can't find the right fit, unfortunately, we would have to come back here and get a change order to extend that contract a little bit more than we would have liked to anticipate. So there's plenty of different reasons why they come up here, but, um, I too share kind of your frustration as well. I wish if we can figure out a cleaner way how to do it, but unfortunately, because of the limits, we have to come here every once in a while for change orders.
Okay, so, so it's change orders from an existing budget item, so it's not increasing the budget or going outside of-
Oh, oh, no, no.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
I have a question on number six. Um, we are awarding, uh, Michigan Virtual for 113 semester one advancement placement courses. So I asked this before, but I just wanted to make sure it's in the record that this is per usage. So we're up, awarding this amount, up to this amount, but the usage could be different. Uh, we're being charged per course, not just as a alum sum.
Correct, you know, these are for classes that we don't necessarily offer. And I, I don't know if the, you know, you want to come up and it's her field, so I don't want to necessarily-
Sure.
Give all the answers.
Hi. Um, yes, to your point, so these are classes that are not typically offered by the high schools currently, uh, many of which are high school AP classes. And so that varies semester by semester based on student interest. And so the good news is we've had, uh, a huge influx of students who are interested in taking advanced placement courses. And so that's why you see the numbers increased. And so it varies semester by, to semester.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have also another question on number nine. So just to make sure, those are new projects that we're asking for. So the 525,000 is to provide construction management for the new projects that we have.
Correct, yeah, most of those are grant-funded. Um, we have board agenda for two of those items for, that relate to this. That would be for the playground phase three, for the playground improvements at Salina, uh, the campus there, and then also the, uh, each, well, the ventilation improvements at Fortson. Those are the two biggest projects. And then we had the ongoing, the only one that wouldn't be new would be the ongoing one for the early college elevator. That's, right now, the schedule goes through March, April.
And the early college program is basically related to the elevator, correct?
Correct, correct.
Do we have a final day when that will finish?
Next year, I think, the elevator, right, didn't you say? Because the elevator had to be-
Project finished, yeah.
Yeah, so right now, to be completely transparent, uh, we're going to have the building, the, uh, the, the walls built for the elevator. We'll be waiting on the cab. Um, the elevator cab, historically, uh, they can get pushed. So right now, we're on track to have it all done and ready to be occupied, uh, in mid-March.
Sounds good. All right, no other questions on any other items, so we can get a roll call on those action items. Just a roll call then.
Jamal Aljamie?
Yes.
Ali K. Basie?
Yes.
Patrick De Ambrosio, yes. Mary Petlicoff?
Yes.
Nazar Sow?
Yes.
Amr Zar, not here. President Moser.
Yes, thank you. Now we can go to 19. Uh, if you can just, trustee De Ambrosio, read the recommended action for that.
19? Appointment of interim superintendent. Background information.
Just to the recommended action.
Oh, recommended action. Move that-
Blank.
Blank.
Say blank.
To be appointed to interim superintendent while the board conducts a search for a permanent replacement effective. Pursuit to conduct-
To contract.
Negotiations with the board, president, vice president, and treasurer.
I move that Lamis Ror be appointed to interim superintendent, uh, effective December 5th.
What was that?
It's December 5th.
And I would support that.
Supported by trustee Aljamie. I, before we vote, I'd like to welcome Ms. Ror, um, if, if the board has any questions. And we can start with, if you were to be appointed, uh, as interim superintendent, what would you see the major, uh, issues that we, the district will be facing in the next few months? Good evening.
It's on, okay.
Yes.
Uh, first, if this were to, uh, be moved and approved, it would be my honor to serve in this role as interim. Um, even though it is a short stint of time, um, it's also a very critical time. Uh, as leaders, we know that, uh, improvement takes many years, but decline takes moments. And so every moment matters. Uh, the focus is student achievement as always, moving the needle with that, as well as our two, uh, major initiatives this year, which is attendance and bullying. That would be the priority. Um, in addition to that, like I said, there's a team here. Dr. Maleko has always modeled a team approach, and there's a reason for that. Everybody brings expertise and experience with them, uh, that should be valued. That being said, as the interim, I must have conviction in any decision-making that's made and stand by that. Uh, I also recognize that you have a job to do as you're searching for superintendent, and you will be getting internal and external candidates. Uh, so it's possible that one of my colleagues will be my boss one day, and it would be my honor to serve any of them. It's an exceptional team, and as a unit, we're focused on moving the district forward every day. We cannot be distracted, every moment matters. Um, in addition to bullying and attendance and student achievement, we have an infrastructure issue that we also need to prioritize. Uh, build community trust in us and provide for our students what they deserve, which is a space to learn that is aligned with the leaders they will become in the future. If you have any questions, feel free.
Thank you, Ms. Ror, any questions? Trusty Petlicoff?
I just wanted to, um, have clarity for, uh, the people who are listening. It is my understanding that you are not interested in applying for the permanent position so that everybody is aware that this is a temporary position.
Yes, and, uh, you balance your decision-making with what you can do and what you should do and what's good for you. And for me, what's good for me is maybe a temporary position where I can support the district. I have zero plans and that will not change. I will not be applying for the superintendent position. That is not what's good for me and my future.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right. Any other discussion? Discussion, any, no comments, okay, roll call?
Jamal Aljamie?
Yes.
Ali K. Basie?
Yes.
Patrick De Ambrosio, yes. Mary Petlicoff?
Yes.
Nazar Asov?
Yes.
Amr Zar, not here. President Moser.
Yes, congratulations, Ms. Ror. Uh, so following this, uh, Vice President Petlicoff and Treasurer De Ambrosio will be meeting with Mrs. Ror, uh, to do contract negotiations and execute the short-term contract with, with her. We're very excited to welcome her as our, um, interim leader. In the meantime, we will be launching, uh, our search for our new superintendent, and I would like this opportunity to, uh, invite all of the stakeholders to be involved. Uh, there will be so many opportunities that you can be involved in this search to, to have our own leader, and I'm very excited. I know sometimes change is difficult, uh, but, uh, I believe we have navigated a lot of difficult decisions. And I'm very happy, very excited, uh, to be with all of you, uh, my colleagues, uh, leading the district at this time. All right, uh, we can go to the next, or summary of 18. Oh, we already pulled 18, right?
Well, you just pulled it as a squeeze.
Yeah, we, we're taking out 18. So we can review more inform- Yeah, review more information and it will be brought up in a, in a future meeting.
Just one comment that the deadline for accepting the funds is November 30th. So I just want to make sure the board's aware of that.
When is that?
November 30th.
November 30th is the deadline. We do have a meeting next week at the college, so that could be considered, uh, where we could have a closed session first uh, prior to the meeting and then possibly vote on, on that next meeting. We're also monitoring what other districts are doing with regards to that item and, um, because it might be litigated in the courts, so. So if we can have, uh, a summary of the agenda items that were just approved today.
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of the warrants per bond report, 25-58. Number two, approval and award to AMH Healthcare Incorporated. Number three, approval and award to HIA Healthcare Incorporated. Number four, approval and award to Fazak Education Staffing LLC. Number five, an approval of an award to TACT Corporation of NYC. Number six, approval and award to Michigan Virtual. Number seven, approval and award to Virtual Learning Academy Constarium. Number eight, approval of change orders. Number nine, approval of change orders per board report, 25-59. Number 10, approval and award to Ki- Number ten, approval and award to King Scott per board report. Twenty-five dash sixty. Number eleven, an approval and award to Pinnacle Contracting Group E dash Ideas Monroe Plumbing and Heating and O'Donnell Electric per board report. Twenty-five dash sixty-one. Twelve through fifteen, approval of non-instructural and instructional personal items for P twelve. Item sixteen, approval of financial statement. Number seventeen, an approval of a resolution honoring Dr. Glenn Maleko per board report. Twenty-five sixty-seven. Number nineteen, approval and appointment of interim superintendent. Number twenty, approval of donations.
Thank you, Trustee Di Ambrosio, and on seventeen, I'd like to also take this moment to, once again, thank Dr. Maleko for so many years, three decades of service to Dearborn Public Schools, and congratulating him as he takes the helm of our next state superintendent. We wish he was with us today, but I, I'm hoping that he will be with us on Wednesday for his away party that Ms. Harris has been organizing for the past few weeks. So, once again, congratulations to Dr. Maleko, and we will still be in touch with him.
Well, we just hope this isn't a bad omen that.
All right, next item, please.
Discussions, none.
Can, can I, I know we have no discussion item, but I'm going to request that President Mosov at least lay out for the community, not, we've appointed our interim, what the next steps will be.
Correct.
They understand what is coming soon in order to set the stage.
Sure, so, thank you for that, Trustee Petrichoff. On November third, we did have a training by an M A S B facilitator who talked about best practices of hiring a superintendent and laid out a great map for us, and that presentation now is available online. The minutes will be approved next meeting. But we would, as the entire board, be involved in the hiring of the superintendent. We will be first hiring a search firm. Most likely, a search firm that has been known to help districts hire superintendents. I believe Finance Committee may, I don't want to steal their thunder, they're going to speak about that, too. So, after we hire the search firm, they'll be building a profile for the superintendent. They'll have focus groups where they'll be able to do an early post where candidates can start applying, and also building that profile that they get from the stakeholders and kind of get all of the applications flowing. All of the board members will be able to see those applications. After that, they will recommend up to six candidates, five candidates, that are the top contenders. And then the board members will be able to interview those individuals. At one point, they will become public. That, that will depend on, on the whole situation where, where is the cutoff of those six candidates with the coordination of the entire board? Those will be public interviews. Then, we will have finalists, up to three, where they'll be able to visit the school campus if they're not an internal candidate, meet with stakeholders, and we will be gathering also feedback as we go. And after that, we will have, again, public interviews and then a selection at the end.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So, I'm excited for that process and looking forward to it. Trustee Jami?
No, I was hoping trustee Di Ambrosio could add what we discussed, some of the timelines that we discussed in the Finance Committee.
We could do that in the reports, yeah, so let's move on.
In the committee report.
Yeah, in the committee reports.
Okay.
Acknowledged of correspondence?
I have responded to all of the emails that were all addressed to us. And yeah, that's all I had. Any other correspondence? Next item?
Board Member Committee and organizational reports, and as trustee Ajami mentioned, tonight, we had our financial meeting with, with Tom, and so, we discuss, the discussion of the thirty-one grant from the M D A. We went over, reviewed. We also discussed our financial data, our general funding, and board financial reports. And then, with, in regards to the superintendent search firm, R F P, Tom has already sent out, so when you get home, don't go to bed, open up your docs and start reading. So, you'll have a couple of days to review it. If you have any questions, you can call Tom. We, you have till the seventeenth, actually, the fourteenth, I'm sorry. And then it will be submitted on the seventeenth, and then the bids will close on December fourth, or all due in, which will give us the board one week to review all of our applications. And at that time, we'll make a decision at our December tenth board meeting.
Perfect.
So, if anybody has any questions, feel free to call Tom. He'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Any other committee reports? Trustee Petrichoff?
This is not a committee report, per se, but at Care to the Core, I just wanted to alert the full board. Some of them have already heard me talk about this at another committee meeting that we had earlier. At Care to the Core, I had a conversation with Mr. Sealy about a conversation I had had with somebody from the city, Ali Abazid, who's the director of the Health Department, and his wanting, his interest in remaining committed to community efforts. So, we have decided that we're going to, because Care to the Core has kind of been downsized since COVID, and, and it isn't what it was originally, where the city was involved with community efforts to represent, you know, the mental and social health of, of our students and families. So, we're going to meet in a steering committee to kind of flesh out with a, a few people what we would like to see, how we would like to grow this. So, I just wanted to let the other board members know that they may be asked to participate. And just a reminder, we only can have three board members on any of these committees.
Could we have this part of the City Relations Committee?
Well, that was one of the conversations I had, because the City Relations Committee kind of was not very active in the past year.
Yeah.
So, now that we have new seated trustees, depending on what we decide, yeah, it, it could, at least, the City Relations Committee is a little bit different than what this could potentially be. So, this might be a separate.
Sure, it could be a sub initiative.
Right, but, but it could be supplemented through the City Relations Committee as well.
Trustee Al Jami?
So, good segue, because that was one of my questions in the City Relation Committee. I know prior trustees led that, and we didn't have any, I, I've been here a year, we've not had any meetings.
Yeah.
So, how do we move forward and, and set up?
I, I have the old agendas that I can share with them.
Sure, if you are another chair.
I am.
Yeah, so, I, I'd like, if we can get Dr. Maleko to coordinate with, we usually meet with the mayor, and then whomever, based on the topic, he would bring in his directors.
His department heads.
Yeah, department heads.
And we would bring ours.
So, we'd like to schedule that as soon as possible. I, I do understand that this year, we did have an election, so they were pretty busy, but now that election is behind us, we can, we can definitely.
The mayor is out on, until December, I believe, the third, due to his wife having a baby.
Right, I know, but we can get the, we can get it scheduled, at least for December. So, if we can have, trustee Ajami, if you can coordinate with Dr. Maleko and see when they can schedule a meeting.
Or with the?
In coordination.
It'll be Ms. Ror, because Dr. Maleko.
Won't be here, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just feel like there's a transition period, and maybe this is the first task the board asked for.
We'll see how she does.
So, I'll, I'll contact.
Sounds good, thank you.
And I'll send you the agendas that I have from past City Relations meetings.
I, I have that, too, yeah. Okay, any other committee reports? If not, we can go to board member and superintendent commentary. That's the next item. Yeah.
Board member, superintendent commentary.
Trustee Al Jami?
Tom, do you have anything first?
No, no, I don't.
A couple of things, with regard to the Etzel Ford soccer team, they left too fast for me to make a comment. Great. You know, what they're doing is amazing. They're making a name for themselves, and great kids. One of them played basketball for me. Amazing, amazing athletes and amazing kids. But I did want to mention their coach. Mohammed Ariashi, who I've known for a long time, he's an amazing person, and he's not only the coach for Etzel Ford. He does a lot of things with youth, you know, kids in eight, nine, ten year old, and, and he leads a Mesa, which is an organization for youth soccer. Every time I see him, he's surrounded by a group of kids. They, they kind of look up to him, and he mentors them. Amazing, I'll call him a young man, amazing person that I've always admired what he does for the kids. So, he's not only a great coach. Also, I want to send a shout out to Ms. Hassan. Rima Hassan is doing a great job at Etzel Ford, and so much has changed from the years that we were advocating for Etzel Ford, and sometimes we, we only complain, but we don't mention the people's effort, you know, the, how the school has changed. And I used to sit in front of the board, complain about Etzel Ford, and now I'm giving her a shout out, so, just for that purpose. I do have something else more that I want to present to the board, and I was hoping Dr. Maleko was here, because this impact the state board. It's, it's, it's something that our board needs to recognize is happening, and, you know, we have different, you know, beliefs, some are conservative, some are not, and, and that's okay. We're, this is what makes a good board. Right now, the Michigan Board of Education is introducing or doing a draft for their Michigan Health Education Standard Framework, and they're changing the curriculum to include specifically section eight point two point S H, which is sexual health. They're introducing items that me personally, I'm opposed to, and I would ask that Dr. Maleko, you know, looks into it as, as, not as the superintendent of Dearborn, but also, but the superintendent for the state. We don't need any changes to the curriculum. We already had enough problems, and, and people need to be left alone with their beliefs and values. Recently, the, the state legislator did a, a resolution, which is a Resolution one ninety-five, and basically, just a little, it said, a resolution to oppose the proposal, Michigan Health Education Standard Framework, and urged the Michigan Department of Education to redraft, or the Michigan State Board of Education to reject these standards. So, just to be aware that there's changes that are being pushed, and I really think the parents should still control what their kids should be able to do at the schools, and the, the state should not be pushing these sex education on our kids. And, you know, I, I would highly recommend that you go look at it. It's referred to as the Michigan Health Education Standard Framework. Page thirty-two is what you should look at, and section eight point two point S H is the, the area that you should focus on. At least, that's what I'm opposed to.
I would just like to remind everyone, though, because I have looked at these arguments, and if you don't take it in the full context of where this is, of how this is to be implemented in the, in the full law, then you're assuming that there, things are being either removed from parental control and/or local control and being subjected to this one standard, and my understanding, from what I've read, that is not true when you read it in the full context of the, of the language. So, be careful in what you look at, and make sure you've got the entire picture, rather than just a section that you're referring to, because that's not my understanding, and I've looked at this since it started to become a headline. And I'm not, every local board should be allowed to do what they think is in the best interest of their community. That's why school boards are elected in the first place, is to represent, and I don't believe that's being taken away. I think that's some, that's a, a misnomer of what people are saying, they're, they're seeing. So, I'm just caution everybody, if you look at these, that you look in the whole context of what's being presented at the end of the day. And it's going to be up, up to the state legislature and the Board of Edu, the State Board of Education at the end of the day.
And, and if I could just answer, so, I am looking at the whole, and I'm focused on what impacts me and my values. So, I didn't say the whole thing was, should be rejected. I said, this particular section should be rejected. And I gave the page and the section. I really don't think, and even the state legislators have asked for them to be rejected, and I asked Dr. Maleko, is the new state superintendent to, to look into that. There's a meeting Thursday. I think, I think it's Thursday. I'll have to confirm.
November thirtieth.
Anybody that wants to attend could attend. I, I'll try to make it, but I'm not sure. I think for us, we need to be proactive, you know, before things are passed and make our voice heard. You know, it's, it's, for me, I don't agree with this section in saying the whole section, no, but this section should not, they should not be pushing it on us.
Now, this framework is usually a recommended option, right? That they present to school districts to take on what they want.
And, and opt-out are always available for every parent. Nothing's being changed in that regard.
However, yeah, if, if you feel passionate about those changes, definitely, there's an opportunity to.
For any other board member, I can only speak for myself.
Correct. There's an opportunity to speak to the, to the Board of Education on, on the thirteenth.
But I'm, I'm hoping Dr. Maleko would hear us, since he's still with us, and hear our.
I don't think he has authority yet, until he has started.
And, and Dr. Maleko has to speak for the entire state when he gets in that seat, not just for us. And I'm not going to assume that he's going to go there and only speak for the city of Dearborn.
But Mary, I think what I'm asking is for us, not for the whole state, so this is.
That's not going to be his role.
This is our opinion, my opinion, as a conservative parent, to say that we oppose it, and.
Not we, you.
Well, the community, I meant, the conservative community. I'm hoping other people in the board would oppose it as well, because I don't want this pushed on our kids. Or, and I, I understand there's an opt-out, but opt-out is, I've never been a believer that it works, because if parents don't know it exists, you know, especially some parents, they don't go in opt-out. And I have always believed in opt-in, but that's for a future discussion.
Okay, thank you, trustee Al Jami. Any, any other commentary? I do have a few.
I, I just wanted to also, it's unfortunate that Dr. Maleko's not here to. I just wanted to also, it's unfortunate that Dr. Maleko's not here today because we did want to have a, at a public meeting. Maybe we can get the cameras back on Wednesday. And in order, it's unfortunate that he isn't here for us to be able to thank him. I knew him from his very beginning days of coming to this district, and have watched his career over all these years. And he will be missed. He has done a job I never anticipated for this length of time. Most superintendents don't make it 10 years, quite frankly. So.
The average is two and a half years.
Yeah. So I congratulate him all the way around for the exceptional work. And he's our third Superintendent to head to the State Offices. So we must be doing something right here with all the successes we're seeing. So I greatly appreciate that and wanted to be able to say that publicly. I'd hoped he'd be sitting here to say it to his face. I'll say it to him on Wednesday, as long as I'm not ill.
I hope not.
Yep, I just was gonna say the same thing. I've been in education for over 35 years. Most of it's dealing with the Board of Superintendent, previous as an auditor, and now as business official. I've had the interim Superintendent role. I've done payroll. I've done a lot of things. But Glenn is a unique individual that poured his heart out for Dearborn for almost three decades. He's always about students first. He's always made decisions that, what are good for kids. Not good for necessarily the executive cabinet or all that. But we understand, we're here for that purpose. And his dedication, his enthusiasm is inspiring. You know, his favorite times where you see him in the football stands on football night, taking pictures with the kids, he is so good with them and can communicate and listen to them, and they respond in kind. And so I think, you know, that's something that we can all achieve, too. Even one of my goals for the whole 11 years here, to get bored of social media, so I failed him in that. But that's okay. He understood it, and it was a long shot on his side. But we're really gonna miss him. You know, he listens to everybody. He never makes decisions, you know, off the cuff. He listens to everybody. And usually by then, we're all in consensus of what needs to be done. So I think you also made a great decision with Ms. Ror. She'll be great at that. She's very good with people. And she listens, too. So I think you made a good choice in that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
I do want to say on Glenn, I've known Glenn for over 20 years, started at Salina. And he was always great at relationships. He handles himself so well, even when you come at him very strong, and in some cases, people attacking him, he handled himself well. He never let it impact him and impact the way he sees things. Even those that would do that to him, he would still treat him with respect. He does not change because of someone's attitude. And he really cares about the community. I saw at Salina, how he cared about Salina and cared about the kids, and the kids loved him. And, you know, took it to Central Office. And, you know, he did a great job. But like I said, the way he navigates challenges and builds relationships, because Dearborn is not the easiest place. Dearborn is not the easiest place to navigate and deal with people. And, you know, being on the Board for a year, I realized that, how tough it is. When people don't get their way, you're not their friends anymore. And so I commend him and I wish him the best of luck. And, you know, we will always think of Glenn as one of us.
Absolutely.
Glenn is a product of Dearborn. And I am so glad he's going to the State because now we have an advocate. Even though Mary said he does it for the whole state, we really think Glenn is working for us.
I'm sure he's still, his heart will still rest on this, this, sir. Thank you. I do have something to share. Fortson High School game against Cass Tech. That's always been a classic, by the way we beat them two years ago. We ended up losing this playoff, but the kids put up a good fight. They did amazing at a, at a grass field that is rugged. So congrats to the Fortson Football Team for a great season. And just planning ahead for all three high schools to have great seasons next year, especially at Dearborn High School. I hope they have moved on and right now, hopefully have a great coach coming up and a great season. I look forward always to the Fortson and Dearborn game. And same for Etzel, especially that I do have now a young one on the team. I'll be chairing on the sidelines. As Mr. Wall mentioned, Veterans Day Ceremony tomorrow at Lori at 9:00 a.m., if you're able to attend. There's also a ceremony at the City, and that happens at 11:00 a.m. And speaking of the City, as I mentioned, November's elections occurred on November 4th. Voters spoke at the polls and reelected six members of the City Council and welcomed Mr. Devin O'Reilly as a seventh Council member. So congratulations to all of them. The Mayor got reelected. So did the Clerk, Mr. Durani. Congratulations. We look forward to continuing the relationship with the City, and hopefully they'll meet with us soon. And tomorrow is parent teacher conferences at the middle school and high school. I believe elementaries might be different, May 12.
K-12.
K-12. Oh, everybody. So tomorrow, yeah. I hope, I always love to see schools packed with parents, especially on this important time where you have the chance to talk to the teachers in person. And if you don't, for whatever reason, get to them, please reach out through Parent Square or email, whatever method works best for you. I believe, also Limburg Boutique Shop was awesome. I saw most of you there, so that was great. Limburg always puts up a great boutique shop every year, and it's a great event. That's all I had. MT, oh, also, MT Balls is happening next Monday at Park Place. And I look forward to seeing you on Wednesday, if you're able to, for Glenn's party or next meeting on Monday. That's all I had. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates?
We did have requests.
Request for information.
Sorry.
Any?
Request for information and our future agenda items.
Any requests for information? Trustee Pavlicov?
Just because we have some new Board Members who've never been through, I want to remind you, because it's getting late and we're probably not gonna, I don't think any of us can tolerate another meeting or workshop or training session. But the organizational meeting in January is coming up, and they are not aware of how that usually operates. So I would suggest that we either have some kind of conversation at some point with them individually to explain what to expect, or to somehow.
Would the, would the entire Board be interested in a study, not a study session, but a training session for organizational meeting? I mean, since.
Why are you looking at me?
No, because we've met, I'm looking at everyone. But I'm saying, we've had this last year, right, the training?
Right.
So I believe for the old members, if I could say, it's fresh in our minds. I could reshare the presentation.
Yes, reshare.
And with both new trustees to go over it, and also provide a video of last meeting of the years before. But I believe the presentation is very helpful.
I would just reshare the presentation and answer any questions.
And also, great that you bring that up. So as far as election of officers, every year, we do the reorganization. And there are the President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary. And if you're interested in being in any of the positions next year, the.
Start expressing your interest now.
Start expressing that interest and letting know, other fellow, fellow Board Members know that you're interested in that position. And to rally kind of that support, kind of campaigning, again. So, but yeah, I'll get with trustee Bazie and trustee Subh, and see when we can do that, individual training. And if any other Board Members would like to do it again, feel free to reach out.
Okay.
Yeah, trustee Ajami?
One last thing. I want to thank Mr. Wells for adding the budget items for special funds to be a part of the monthly budget reports. So it looks really good and appreciated. Thank you for the quick turnaround.
Thank you for that. Okay. No other requests? We can go to the next item.
Future meeting dates, Monday, November 17th, 2025. HFC Policy Committee Meeting at 5:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, November 17th, 2025, HFC Audit Committee Meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, November 17th, 2025, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. Monday, December 8th, 2025, P-12 Board of Education Training at 6:00 p.m. Sorry. Monday, December 15th, 2025. Monday, December 8th, 2025, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom. Monday, December 15th, 2025, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned at 9:22.